The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
I'd like to call this special board meeting to order. We'll start with roll call. Beth, could you help us with that, please?
Good evening. Becker.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Sidney Cow.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Brandon Hubel.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
All right, all six board members are present. On our agenda tonight, we have interviews for our vacant board member, board position. We have eight people lined up to interview, and we will get started right away here at 5 o'clock. Josh, I believe we have somebody in the waiting room, candidate number one. I don't know if Josh is watching somewhere. Oh, he did. Okay, so just wait a minute. Our first candidate is Eric Hagador, and I know he's in the waiting room. And our tech support just stepped out, so as soon as he gets back, we'll bring Eric in. He's virtual.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. No, no problem. So I guess while we're waiting, I can just cover a little bit of how tonight will go. So we have all eight interviews scheduled. We do have a 10-minute break from 7:30 to 7:40. If we are running ahead of schedule, we'll bring in candidates earlier as they're available, so we may adjust that break time depending on how we're doing. After all eight interviews, then we will, each board member will select their top three candidates, not in any order, just let us know who your top three candidates are. Beth will tally those for us to give us an idea of which way the board is kind of leaning. Certainly can have discussions about any candidate. But hopefully that tonight's meeting ends with someone making a motion and someone receiving at least four votes to be appointed to the board, and their first meeting would be next Monday, March 8. All right.
Eric, I can allow Eric, the other Eric, in. Are you comfortable with me putting him in?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, here he is.
Will we get to see him? Hi, Eric, can you hear me?
I can. Hello.
Hello.
Who is this I'm speaking to?
This is Eric Van Nuwol, president of the Green Bay School Board.
Very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well. Thank you so much for joining us and for your interest in this position. So as I mentioned a little earlier, but just to make sure, we'll go around. We have five questions. You did receive the questions ahead of time, correct?
I did, I did.
Great. So we have about 30 minutes to ask those five questions, and then anything else at the end that you'd like to let us know about yourself? Any clarifying questions that you may have, we'll ask those at the end.
Sure.
All right, perfect. So we'll start with Laura McCoy. If you could ask question number one.
Hi, Eric.
Hi.
Question number one, why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And what are the contributions you think you can make to the leadership of our district?
Thanks for that question, Laura. Thank you. Let me start with the second part of the question first, if that's all right. So I'm presently associate professor of philosophy at St. Norbert College. And I've taught courses in the history of philosophy and logic and reasoning for about eight and a half years now. In addition to my teaching commitments at the college, I'm presently the chair of what's called the Colleen Chair Committee. Our committee oversees an about a $2 million endowment, and we are responsible for organizing one of the premier lecture series events at the college. Last year, I was asked to be a team lead, one of six team leads, for the college's assurance review, which confirms the college's continuing accreditation with the Higher Learning Commission. I've served on various college committees that are related to assessment efforts at the college and our educational policy committee, say. In 2017 and 2018, I was one of the community members on the Green Bay Public School District-wide Boundary Task Force, when there was the task force about whether, how to deal with space issues, especially on the east side of the district. I'm involved in, I'm on the elder board of my local church, so I'm involved in management and oversight of church budget and church programming through that. My wife was a high school and middle school teacher for a number of years. My mother was actually a school board member when I was growing up in my rural hometown in Iowa. So, all that to say, in terms of contributions I can make to the leadership of the district, I believe I have a rather unique background that includes a variety of firsthand and secondhand experience within education, both in direct teaching, but also in management and oversight of programs with budgets. I know my way around an assessment report. I understand what the difficulties are of allocating budget resources, potentially scarce budget resources in some situations. And I feel that I can empathize with the Herculean efforts that are presently today being undertaken by teachers across the district as they try to simultaneously, for the first time, teach some students in person and others via Zoom. I've been doing that myself now for the last six months. Additionally, my academic training and my time serving on all these various committees has made me, I would say, unusually attentive to ensuring precision and clarity in my writing and in my speaking, on finding ways to create common ground and consensus when there are disparate views at the table, and to recognize the ways in which spirited disagreement about how to reach a shared goal can usually lead to better policy outcomes in the end. And so those, I think, are my contributions. That I have this experience, and I think the experience has given me a particular set of skills that I think would serve the district well. And as for why I'm seeking appointments to the school board at this time, I think the first part of the question, my first part of my response is the answer to this. So I've long held the view that every one of us has a duty to serve our community in some way or other. And I think that the way we serve our community ought to be responsive to our particular skill sets and to the urging of fellow community members. So I've never run for elected office before. I'd never given any serious thought to doing so, to be honest. But when this vacancy arose, several parents in the district who know me messaged me, and they asked me to apply. And they said, they thought, Eric, you've got sort of this wealth of experience, and you've got a generally amiable personality, and you have the right kind of attention to detail, that a number of parents in the district thought I would be a valuable asset to the board and the district going forward. And on the basis of their recommendation, I put in my letter for application, thinking that I have a set of skills that could be of potential service to the district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello there. What are some of the issues that you believe have been brought on by the pandemic? And as a board member, how would you prioritize and address these?
That's a great question. And I think that the last 12 months have brought renewed attention to the fact that student health and educator health is a prerequisite for student success. Not that we didn't know that before, but I think we have sort of a renewed appreciation of it now. But not just physical health, but also mental health. Students can't reach their full potential if they or their teachers are physically ill, whether that's from COVID or whatever else. But I think we see a little more clearly than maybe we did before how student success is also so severely impacted by depression, anxiety, loneliness, by larger family struggles like joblessness and food insecurity. So, starting today, in fact, teachers across the district are now being vaccinated. Vaccines will be available to the wider community within the coming months and to children, I think, maybe sometime this fall, I've heard. So I mean, fingers crossed, hopefully the worst days of the COVID pandemic are behind us. That said, insofar as the district mission is to educate all students and inspire everyone to succeed, I think an important priority going forward is that we continue to reexamine and refine these resources dedicated to student health across the district, both physical and mental. So for the last 12 months, the district has gone to what seemed to me admirable lengths to keep students fed. And now they've rearranged classrooms, and they've altered traffic flow through buildings to keep students and teachers safe from respiratory illness. And all of these efforts are to be applauded, and definitely careful consideration should be made about whether and how to continue them going forward. But I would say a real priority going forward is to ensure that there's an adequate amount of, inadequate number of mental health resources available throughout the district. Just returning students to buildings, I'm not sure is going to fully address what I might call the debt of mental distress that's built up both in students and teachers over the last year. And so if I were appointed to this position, I think one significant priority in the coming months would be to work with the other members of the board and to work with health staff in the district to really put together a plan to assess the current state of student mental health and to find ways to better support that, whether that be with the hiring of additional counselors or new programs. But I think it's something that the district sort of needs to be aware that this is going to be an ongoing issue that I don't think has been solved by just putting students back in buildings today.
Thank you.
Hi, Eric. It's Rhonda Sidney Cow here.
Very nice to meet you, Rhonda.
You too. Can you describe your understanding of the school board's role and the administration's role in the district?
Sure thing. So the school board sets the mission and the strategic plan and allocates budget resources to accomplish that mission and that plan. Not too different from the relationship at my own college between our Board of Trustees and the college. The administration, then, is responsible for implementing the strategic plan, for accomplishing the mission with the resources under the oversight of the board. I mean, some of that is fairly boilerplate. That is the relationship between boards and administrations everywhere, of course. To go a little bit beyond that and to say sort of what I see as uniquely the role of the board. So it's not possible, I don't think, for the board to create student success. And it's not exactly the board's responsibility to create student success. The members of the board are not teachers who make pedagogical decisions about the content of the classrooms. Members of the board are not principals who are having to figure out the utilization of particular buildings. The responsibility of the board is to make sure all the preconditions of student success are in place across the district, across the entire district. The things that will empower all the individual teachers in the individual classrooms to bring about student success. So the work of the board is to oversee the work of the superintendent to ensure that adequate resources, both physical resources in terms of buildings and space, but also in terms of money, to make sure those resources are available for district priorities. It's the role of the board to make sure that scarce resources aren't being squandered in ways that don't serve the mission of the district. And it's the role of the board to do what it can to guarantee and monitor that teachers and students throughout the district in every building and in every last classroom have what they need, what is needed for the students in that classroom, in that building, to succeed. And I think that's the board's primary responsibility, to make sure that all of those preconditions for student success are in place so that the teachers and administrators in the districts can do the job that is needed to bring about student success. And then in addition, I think the school board has this additional duty to the community. We have a duty to list, the board has a duty to listen to and engage with stakeholder concerns, constituent concerns across the district to help stakeholders be informed about what's happening in the district. The board has to be a careful steward of community resources insofar as it is the community that funds and supports the district. And I think there's a duty to be an advocate for public education generally. Public education here, but public education statewide and nationwide as well.
Thank you.
Hey, Eric. Andrew Becker.
Hi, Andrew. Nice to meet you.
Hello. As a school board member, how would you be an advocate for the district's schools and students?
That's a good question. So being an effective advocate, I think, requires first that one be an effective communicator. And then second, that you form the right kinds of relationships with the relevant stakeholders and community groups. You can't be an advocate if you don't know the people you're advocating to, and you also can't be an advocate if you can't communicate effectively. I think that in my role as a teacher in higher ed, as someone who teaches communication regularly, I think I have the effective communication bit down, at least in some sense, to some degree. I think I would make a significant use of social media as a platform for this, as other school board members have done, to try to offer a space for community engagement, a place where I'm present to hear the concerns of parents and community members, a place where I can provide updates about the district's successes. I would try to, I would seek to deepen that existing relationships I have with, say, local leaders and higher education and local leaders and various religious communities across the district. I would deepen those relationships, and I would try to form new ones, say, with local business leaders, local political leaders, to try to find ways that community resources might help us achieve district goals and to find ways in which district resources might be able to help further goals of the community, albeit in ways that are in furtherance of and, you know, consistent with the district, the school board's mission, the school's mission.
Okay, thanks, Eric. This is, I'm Brenda Warren. Nice to meet you. Our last question is, could you please identify specific examples of situations where you have demonstrated a working style, communication skills, leadership skills, or decision-making skills that you think would be effective on a seven-member school board?
Absolutely. So my examples of these, my situation examples are all sort of going to go back to my answer to Laura's first question about what do I think my contributions would be. So as I mentioned, I presently serve as the chair of this committee at St. Norbert College called the Colleen Chair Committee. So there are nine of us, faculty and students and some staff members. We have a $2 million endowment, and among other things, we try, we accept grant applications from across the college to fund different programs across the college. And so as chair of that committee, I am involved with taking people who might disagree or who might agree, who might agree but might disagree about what is worthy to be funded, about those sorts of programs that should be run. And it is my task to try to carve out consensus. And as, and my leadership style in that role, I seek to find consensus wherever possible. If it comes down to a majority vote on that committee, I often feel like I've somehow failed the committee. Like, my job is to try to get the committee to a shared understanding of the committee's mission in a way that everyone can see that the grants we're accepting and the programs we're funding are in furtherance of our mission. But and so in that context, I think it's important to seek consensus, important to build relationships, important to build agreement across people. I am, I also, as I mentioned, I'm presently a team lead for this HLC reaccreditation effort at the college. In that role, I manage a team of 10 people, again, faculty, staff, and students. And our goal over, our task for the past year has been to seek out evidence and write a rather long and detailed report that details the college's compliance on a wide variety of criteria that are expected by our accrediting body. And so in that role, I have the task of assigning specific people, trying to sort of take this team of 10 people I have, thinking about who would be good partners, who would work well together, and then dictate, sending them off sort of in teams of two. Okay, you go talk to these people on campus, you go gather this evidence. You two, you're going to be writing this aspect of the report. And so trying to recognize what people's individual skill sets are, recognizing who might work well together, who might have a little bit harder time working together, and finding ways, again, to further that common mission and make sure that the work gets done, but in a way that's sort of fair and equitable to everyone involved. As a, as a member of the elder board at my church, over the past year, again, having to make decisions about how to continue services in the age of COVID, not nearly as, as difficult a task as I think all of you have had here in the district over the past year. But that in and of itself, as you have multiple people sitting around a table who don't agree about perhaps what the right sort of health interventions are, how careful to be in regards to this pandemic or whatever else, and trying to form, trying to form an agreement and make, reach a decision that sort of respects everybody's input, but ultimately is further, furtherance of the best interests of the church, its congregants. Yeah, I think there are other things I could say, but I think I've, I've probably gone on long enough that in each of these instances, it's been a case where I've had a team underneath me or alongside me in some way, and just aiming to try to find some way to build consensus in the midst of disagreement.
All right, thank you very much, Eric. We have about five to seven minutes left. So I want to give you the opportunity to say anything else that you may not have had a chance to say about yourself, anything else you'd like us to know. And if you have any high-level questions, we can try to answer those for you as well.
Absolutely. So in terms of just a couple other things about myself, so I am the father of two wonderful children who are in the district. I have a six-year-old daughter who is a first grader and a 10-year-old daughter who's a fifth grader, both at Langley Elementary and Aloe. My fifth grader is going on to Washington Middle School next year. She's really excited about the Fine Arts Academy there at Washington Middle School, and so she's gone into that. And at the end of the day, on top of everything else I've said, if anything, they are the reason, more than anything probably, that I put my name in for this position. So I believe strongly in the importance of public education and have a very, and having an excellent public education system. And like I said in my earlier answer about sort of the role of the school board, I don't think the school board is the, has the responsibility of bringing about student success. I don't think the school board can do that. But I think it's also, I think it's possible that the school board, if the school board is not doing their job well, then student success is more difficult all the way down. And so in part, I put my name in for this task because I believe whoever the seventh member of this, whoever you select as the seventh member of the board will have an important responsibility, the well-being of 22,000 students in the district, including my two daughters. And I just hope that as you, as you make that decision, I want you to pick someone who will be an excellent advocate for the district and will be excellent at bringing about the district's mission. And at the end of the day, if that's not me, I'm actually fine with that, so long as you pick somebody who is excellent and does an excellent job of supporting the students in the district. And yeah, I think that's the only thing I would want to say about myself. Do you, have you made decisions about the timeline for next steps on this search?
Yeah, so the plan is to finish the interviews here tonight. Hopefully this meeting ends tonight with us making a motion and selecting that person. Then we would follow up tomorrow, and hopefully they would join us for our first meeting next Monday on the eighth.
All right, fantastic. Thank you very much. I really appreciate your consideration of my application. I appreciate the time you've given me to talk to you tonight.
All right, thanks so much, Eric. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Be well.
Good night.
It looks like St. Luke is available. Can I let him in already, like a moment?
Everybody ready? All right, we're ready, Beth.
Here he is.
Luke, can you hear me? Luke, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
Are you able to turn your video on, Luke?
Yeah, let me, let me find the camera. I'm getting on the three dots. Start video. Here we go. How do you like that?
If that's really where you are, you can turn your video back off. Thank you so much for taking the time to join us. My name is Eric Van Nuwol. I'm the president of the Green Bay Area Public School District Board of Education. Plan here for us tonight is to go through a few questions to help us get to know you and your perspectives a little bit better. If you don't have any questions for us, we'll get started right away.
All right. Well, I'm going to turn on the volume a little bit more because little quiet. I wanted a little louder.
Okay, we'll make sure that we talk right into our microphones when we ask the questions.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, everyone received the questions ahead of time, so you should be good to go. So, all right, go ahead, Laura.
Hi, Luke. My name is Laura McCoy. Question number one. Why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And what are the contributions you think you can make to the leadership of the district?
Well, I'm sure you guys read my, my letter of interest telling you all about my history of, you know, where I grew up and what I, what I have achieved up to this point. I believe what I contribute is I have over 20 years of experience in education, business, technology, health and wellness. I got my bachelor's degree in genealogy, exercise science. I went for three years at NWTC for my associate in I went for three years at NWTC for my associate in information technology, computer specialist. So I know I can build a computer from the ground up. I've been uh, I created my own nonprofit organization. Um, based on educating the community. Um, with uh using services and technology and health and wellness. So I'm very, very into education, um. Health and technology. And those are really. Big factors that have been. Coming back at me throughout my whole entire life. So I've embraced it and I've helped. Thousands of individuals uh find jobs, uh internships. Training and hiring. Um. With my nonprofit that I created uh six years ago. So I have I have a lot to offer and I've been doing it for the past. I would say over fifteen years because I actually started um my company that I have now, I started it. About seventeen years ago at a at the uh sole proprietor. So that's a lot, my time go from back in two thousand and four. And then uh shut it down for about ten years. And then I turned it into a nonprofit because after the recession, the first recession, two thousand eight. Uh, ten years later, I uh saw how the community needed more help. Uh, back then I was more about, you know, making money and all that, but now it has geared towards the economy has geared towards more like helping. The world and helping the, you know, the public and the economy now. So that's why I. Changed my mission and my vision to uh nonprofit and helping out individuals. I mean, that's there's a lot more to say about what I can contribute, but you know, I guess in a nutshell. That's what I could contribute.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, hi, I just have a follow up question. This is Rhonda Sinikow. Um, can you, you had mentioned um that you had uh done some work in. Uh, health and wellness. Can you just expand on that? Um, just touch on what what type of health and wellness work you were supporting people with?
Yeah, um. Currently, I work part time for the past five years as a caregiver. So I've worked uh in all different facilities. I've worked in in home care. I'm currently working in in home care. I've worked in nursing homes. I've worked in CDRS. I worked in. All the types of facilities you can think of. And I learned a lot when it came to people's health. So uh I'm certified as a registered care worker, you know. I'm not a CNA, but I've got, I could probably take the test and pass it if I took the test. Uh, however, my my path in life didn't take me that way. So and I so I I've got tons of certifications, trauma and Alzheimer's, I can I can help people with Alzheimer's with autism. Um, my nonprofit that I have, I have hired wellness educators, uh some specialize in customized. I have this lady who customizes. Uh, healthcare plan for individuals based on their health and what they want to achieve. I hired this lady who is multi talented. She is a yoga instructor. She's a personal trainer. She does all kinds of things, but uh I hired her on and she just. She just flows in with all the skills that she's in education that she has had um to help people with um. With their wellness and their health. It's more geared towards wellness because everyone is individualized and um we help uh. People from all different types of backgrounds and disabilities and just. Ordinary people who just want to, you know. Get better at being healthy in in different ways, so.
Well, I think, oh, sorry, I was saying that that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, Luke. This is Dawn Smith. What are some issues you believe have been brought on by the pandemic and as a board member, how would you address these?
Oh, I listen to a lot of NPR and uh news radio. I've been listening to them. For over ten years now, and so I listen to the current events. And plus I have children. I have a fifteen year old son, a fourteen year old daughter and a nine year old daughter. And I see. This is like one of the saddest times in life for humanity. I see how the school system is different in three different schools because my three children. Go to three different schools. My fifteen year old goes to a charter school. He goes to uh school of innovation here in Green Bay. And I see how his school handles the pandemic. They're going to school starting, I believe, next week. Hybrid. My daughter in O'Connell goes to school, goes to school in O'Connell. They started school a month ago. And they're full on in person and I I'm scared about that, you know, I don't, you know, I I get this, I'm safer with how my son's doing it. Uh, I feel safer with how my son's doing, but my my daughter in O'Connell, they're. They're on shaky grounds. I I feel they're on shaky grounds doing what they're doing, but we have to move forward. And then my my youngest, my nine year old, she goes to random Lake Elementary in Boynton County. And their system is one of the worst. My daughter, she got COVID back in November. And. They were still doing in school and I was so disappointed. I was telling uh my daughter's mom, I was like. Please keep her home. So right now for pandemic. Uh. I would, I would do priority first. Our children are bringing back this virus and literally killing. The elder, our our adults. And I'm so happy finally we got the vaccine. They're pushing it out fast as they can to the adult. I got vaccinated because I'm a caregiver, so I'm one of the essentials. I got vaccinated last month already. So because I was in the front lines, taking care of people um every day, going into their homes. So the way that they were doing it is I, like I said, I hear the news all the time. People are not getting enough vaccines. It's not going fast enough, moving fast enough, but. We gotta keep moving forward and we gotta keep pushing it and we gotta keep the faith and keep our morale high. Continue focusing on the other league because that's where it it it's where it's getting hit up the hardest. And then work our way through. Teachers are going to be getting them this month. Uh, you know, this week, my professor at NWTC, she's getting hers today. Uh, she's getting her first shot today. Uh. So that's good, you know, we're moving forward. Uh, schools are, you know. Gonna start again, like I said, uh in person, so I believe it's gonna be a long and, you know, slow process, but. I believe we're doing. Fairly well when it comes to prioritizing, you know, what we need to do first and who come first and next after that. Uh, but we gotta keep good communication at all times. We always all gotta be on the same page. Get our facts straight, get our our numbers and statistics correct. Uh, because we can't lose them anymore. We have half a million people, you know. That are gone now because of, you know, pandemic and everything in that shop. That's sad.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Yep, you're good.
Um, can you describe your understanding of the school board's role and the administration's role in the district?
Well, from what I gather. Uh, we all. And the school board and we all look at, you know, all the current and past. Uh, issues going on. We look at all together and we, you know, brain, I mean. Brainstorm all our ideas together, what we can do to make things better, more efficient, work and work together. Um, and then I would be, the administration's role, you know, they administer what we, you know, the choices, the decisions that we make for. From the school board and. But I mean, that's. That's what I believe our role is in the school board to to get everything as a whole and then have the administrators administrate it. And move forward with it and why it. I mean, in the nutshell, that's. That's how I see what uh our role is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Andrew Becker here. As a school board member, how would you be an advocate for the districts, schools and students?
Um. I've taken the test. Um, I'm also not only in my, I well, I'm at TC and NWTC right now, working on my doctorate for. Uh, well, it's gonna be my associate for physical therapist assistant, but ultimately it's. I'm going for my doctorate in physical therapy, but at and at the same time, right now, I'm also at Concordia and MetQon online. Working on my master's degree in education. So it's it's interesting that you asked me about advocacy for uh schools and students because. Uh, going to work for my teacher's license, uh they they teach us all about um. What type of person you are. This leads to the the next question that you guys can ask me, my teaching style and my working style. Uh, I I knew since I was a child uh what kind of person I am. I am a hand on type of person who. Doesn't want to be bored. So if I were to advocate for schools and students, I would be hand on in whatever. Events and issues that we need to get across, I would communicate with people, the people, the organizations. And that we are currently working with and who we could network with in order to. Make things better, not just in school, but. In general, in in our general public health. Um, whatever events we need to partake in, people we need to network with, organizations that we need to network with. Uh, schools and students, I am the person who would. Step right, right away into. Promoting and uh showing that we need to get whatever we're, whatever we. Uh, agree on in the board to, you know. Create or adjust or amend or. Make make more efficient and be more productive. I will go to those events and those organizations, those individuals to get those. Done, get what we need to get done. Because you can't just uh think of all these ideas. It sounds good on paper. It sounds good when you say it, but it's very difficult. Uh, especially from being a business owner, it's very difficult to actually do and do the legwork. Uh, compared to what you plan and say, there's always going to be obstacles and you're gonna have to adapt and adjust. You know, it's on the fly sometimes to situations that happen. And I love that. I'm very adaptable and I am very experienced um when it comes to. Situations like that. Um, that's what I believe when it comes to advocacy for uh schools and students to be. Very involved and. Communicate and work work together to get what we need to get done.
Hi, Luke. I'm this Brenda Warren. Um, I'm going to ask the the final question, but before I do that, I was wondering. If we could go back to question number one and um could you elaborate a little on the first part of that question, which was why you want to be appointed to the school board?
Um. In my letter of interest that I gave to to you, to, I don't know if all of you read it, but um. My biggest concern is when it comes down to it, it's. Our knowledge and everything that we have learned from our predecessors. I was trained and I was taught from church through my schooling and everything like that. We're supposed to pass the knowledge on to next generations. Ahead of us and my my biggest, when I got this email from from you, from you all, I. That was my biggest concern is that I feel that. I I keep getting told from my past, the elders, my elders, that we are. Getting softer and softer and losing more and more uh knowledge and our children are getting softer and softer and more, I guess you could just say it's like. Getting it easier. And in the generation before that, before then, we had it more difficult and. I want to make sure that we that we retain and are able to pass on as much. That we what we know over to them, because they're the ones that's gonna be taking care of us, you know, when we retire. And this was one of the, that was the main thing that really wanted me to be a part of this board was because. Uh, all the knowledge that I can bring and all the hands on experience that I have gone through uh to pass on to the next generation. That is my biggest uh mission and goal in life is to do that.
Okay, thanks, Luke. And then now I'll just ask our final question. Could you please identify specific examples of situations? Where you have demonstrated a working style, communication skills, leadership skills, or decision making skills that you think would be effective on a seven member board?
You know, when I when I looked at this question, um. And I thought about it, I I noticed how you guys all like. Specified on working style, communication skills, leadership skills, decision making skills. I looked at it as a whole. You need all those elements, working style, communication skills, leadership skills. You need to put all those together. Because and it it depends on the situation. So you said examples of situations. For example, as a caregiver, I work, I am currently working with a an individual who's autistic. So I need to know what, how I treat this individual because they. They they can, they can handle what they're doing to a certain limit, but I have to just kinda. Keep an eye on them, making sure that they don't hurt themselves or anything like that. So I have to change my style to that. And I have to communicate more specifically with this individual. So that's my style for that. For and then another example, as an executive director for the nonprofit that I have here. I have to oversee uh the wellness and technology services that I provide to the community. I, like I told you, I hired this lady who is a yoga instructor, personal trainer. I had to put that hat on and be, you know, the executive director and. Make sure that she had the skill set and she was able to be comfortable in um with her clients that she gets and all that. I, you know, I had to hire her and I had to make sure that she had all the provincials. I had to communicate with her, you know, fairly well to know everything inside and out about the personality and her skills. So that was like part of the leadership skill. That was communication skills that I had to use. That was decision making skills that I had to use to. You know, see if she was, you know, a good candidate uh to, you know, provide her her skills to the community. So that's another example of a different working style. And then another working style I would have to say is. Um. As a, as a, as a student, uh because I'm I'm also a student. And I have to change that that working style to make sure I. Get my homework done, organize what I have to get, you know, done first. Projects, I mean, like I said, I'm working on my master's degree and my and my associate's degree. So I have to make sure that I get this paper done, I get this assignment done right on time. Uh, I'm mature, I gotta email and communicate with my professor and other students because sometimes it's group work that I have to do. So that's another example. Um, and I guess our final example is um, I also teach many things. I teach martial arts. Self defense, computer technology, um. And so and when I do that, I have to communicate, for example, when it comes to teaching self defense. I have to separate individuals, different individuals based on their skill level. I have to show them that I'm a, you know, leader by showing them my skills and showing them what what to do, how to properly do things. And that and that decision making comes into the part two, like I said, I have to find out what skill level they are and see. I have to separate some people depending. I have to separate some people depending on this skill level and all that and how to teach them. So that, you know, you need all of those elements when it comes to being a role, for, for being a member of the school board, you know, I'm going to have to, gonna have to depend on the situation what calls for, for what, what you need to do and what skills you need to use.
All right. Thank you, Luke, for answering all of those questions. A few minutes that we have left remaining, I guess I would allow you to mention anything about yourself that you feel like you haven't been able to say already. And then if you have any high-level questions for us, I'd be happy to answer those.
Do you know, well, this is like a simple question. What, what was the reason why the, there was a vacancy? Because that was surprising to me that I got the email. Like, wow, okay. I think it was, they said something like they retired or they left early or something like that. Cause I was like, oh.
Yeah, I certainly don't want to speculate on all the reasons why the previous member stepped down. She was elected to another office in Madison as a state representative, and I think that that was one of the reasons.
Oh, okay. Um, besides that, I don't really have any, anything specifically. I just, what, I guess, what would the timeline be for this now after, after this interview and everything? What, what's the process that happens?
So we will wrap up interviews here tonight and then have our deliberation. All of that will be broadcast live. And we're hoping that we leave tonight's meeting with a motion and approval of our next member. Then we'll be in contact with that person tomorrow and hopefully they will join us for our next meeting, next Monday, March 8th.
Oh, you said broadcast live. Will I get like a link to that or something to feed?
Yep. So this, this is live right now. If you go to the Board of Education site on the district webpage, it might even be right on the homepage. There'll be a YouTube link. And you'll be able to watch the rest of the interviews and tonight's deliberation.
Nice. Oh yeah, that's right. Okay. Yeah.
All right. Anything else for us, Luke?
Uh, no, that's all I got.
All right. Thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Jessica is available, Eric. Just let me know when you'd like me to let her in. Hey there, Eric. I'm not sure if you can hear me. Can you let me know when you'd like me to let Jessica in?
Oh, yeah, I can hear you. I thought we were waiting. I, I thought I said you.
All set?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Glad she said something. Jessica, can you hear me?
Hi, I can.
There we go. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you. How is everyone else doing?
I think we're doing okay. First time we've seen each other in a while in person.
Yes.
Well, thank you so much for taking the time to join us tonight. A little bit about how the process will work. We'll go around the table and ask the questions that you got ahead of time. So we'll go around and, and we've got about 30 minutes. At the end, we'll give you an opportunity to mention anything else that you may have forgotten to mention and any high-level questions that you may want to ask at the end.
All right. That sounds like a plan.
We'll start with Laura.
Hi Jessica, this is Laura McCoy. Question number one, why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And what are the contributions you think you can make to the leadership of our district?
Great. Thank you for the question, Laura. You know, when I reflect on my decision to submit a letter of interest, to, to be one of the people considered to fill this vacancy on the school board, I found myself reflecting a lot on my own educational journey. And, and as some of you may or may not know, I grew up in Green Bay. Green Bay is my home. I grew up in a, in a working class family of immigrants who really put a lot of, of time and energy and highlighted how important education was and is as a vehicle to, you know, to a brighter future. So, you know, I, I started my educational journey as a Head Start student at Fort Howard. I went on to graduate from Green Bay Preble and then also went on to, to receive my bachelor's from UW Madison in 2017 and my master's in 2019. But you know, as, as proud as I am for, for my own educational journey and the doors it has opened up for me, I also know from my own experience that that wasn't the case for everyone. It wasn't the case for all of my peers. And so, you know, I, I want to be able to, to put myself in a position where I can be an advocate for students, where I can, you know, harness the, the, the importance of what an education is and, and the impact that it can make to, to people's futures, you know, not only students as individuals, but families and honestly, communities at large. So, you know, as I reflect on my own educational journey, I really do feel a sense of personal responsibility to give back to the community that has given me so much and also a sense of responsibility to work to ensure that all students have access to a high-quality education. As far as the contributions that I feel I can bring to the school board, you know, first and foremost, I, as, as a woman, as a woman of color, as a Latina who grew up in Green Bay, I feel I can bring a diverse perspective, influence and informed by my own unique personal and lived experiences. You know, we do, we have a growing district. Our community is changing. Even, you know, looking at our students now compared to when I was a student in the district, I see, I see the changes. I see the growing, you know, diverse populations. And so, you know, when you have a district that's 56, you know, almost 57% students of color, I feel it is important for the leadership and, and decision-makers to reflect the communities that they are serving. And so that's, I feel, a contribution that I can bring to the school board, shedding light on those unique lived experiences and having that relational capacity with a, a majority of our students and families. Lastly, I, I do feel that, you know, based on my own lived experiences, but also my professional experience, I have, I have, you know, what it takes. I have, I offer a lot to, to this position, including, you know, experience working with students and families and building, you know, that trust, building those relationships. I have experienced leveraging community and parent engagement. So in my current professional role, I have worked with trusted community partners in, in the area and have been working on building multi-beneficial relationships, right? I think it's important for us to, to recognize the expertise that, that is available to us in our community and welcome those opportunities while also finding ways that we can give back to them as well. So again, I guess just to conclude, I feel my unique lived and personal experiences as well as my professional experience make me a, a great candidate for the school board and, and one that brings, that has a lot to offer.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, Laura.
Hello, Jessica. This is Dawn Smith. How are you?
Hi Dawn, I'm doing well. Thank you.
Good. What are some issues you believe have been brought on by the pandemic? And as a board member, how would you prioritize and address these?
Thank you. So, you know, I, I do want to just start off by saying that I believe there are some issues that have definitely been brought on by the pandemic. However, I also believe that there are issues that have existed but have been highlighted by the pandemic. And, and I think those two are important. It's, it's important to recognize those and distinguish those two. But first and foremost, you know, health and safety of our students, our staff and our greater Green Bay community is, is to me, the biggest issue that has been, that has been brought upon by the pandemic. You know, as decision-makers, I think it's imperative in these times to lean on the expertise of our public health community. As well as it's important to be flexible. There's so much that as far as health and safety is concerned that we didn't know when, when we, you know, entered this pandemic about a year ago. There's still a lot that we don't know. And so as, as a board member, as a member on the board, I, you know, I think it's important for, for me, if I were to be appointed, to be flexible, leaning on public health experts, but knowing that as information changes, you know, our strategy should change along with that. I also think, you know, one of the issues that, that probably exist, that existed but was highlighted by the pandemic is, is our need to, to reassess instructional models and be open to different ways of learning, right? And so, you know, whether virtual or in-person, I think as, as leaders and decision-makers, it's important to ask, is our current instructional model working for all students? Is this an opportunity for us to be open to different ways of learning? You know, students can, can gain, you know, it is my view that students can gain certain skills in different ways. Project-based learning, virtual learning, the importance of social emotional skills and where that learning happens, whether it's inside the classroom or outside of the classroom. I, I think we, you know, public education and educators have been given an opportunity to really reassess traditional instructional models and, and, and be open and forward-thinking as, as we make decisions that impact our students in the future. Lastly, I, you know, I think the, the data also shows and, and backs this up. Something that the pandemic highlighted, an existing issue that the pandemic highlighted was really the inequities that are faced, you know, that our students faced. I heard from a parent that, that shared a very personal story with me about how she was dealing with, you know, her, her students were dealing with virtual learning. There, you know, were some anxiety issues that arose and that were tough to deal with. And, and it was, you know, a vulnerable moment for that parent to share that with me, but also it made me reflect, you know, while I have certain experiences or know people with certain experiences, I also have to be aware that this pandemic is highlighting people differently. And what can we do to close those gaps? You know, this reminds me, there's a, there was a poem shared on Twitter by Damian Barr, I believe. And so this line of his poem is something that I reflect a lot on. And, and the quote is, "We are all in the same storm, but we are not in the same boat." Meaning we're all faced with having to deal with this global pandemic, but we are experiencing, we're weathering the storm differently. As a, if I were to be appointed as a board member, I would prioritize issues that impact, directly impact students. Our kids need us, our kid, our kids need us to also be keenly aware of how the decisions that we're making at the decision-making table, how the impact is being felt and how it's being felt differently across different communities. Thank you. Thanks, Dawn.
Hi Jessica, it's Rhonda Sitnikow.
Hi Rhonda.
Can you describe your understanding of the school board's role and the administration's role in the district?
I can. So, you know, first and foremost, I have a deep, deep respect for educators and leaders, educational leaders, you know, who wake up every day committed to protecting and fighting for public education. You know, as I stated earlier, public education has played a critical role in, in my own life and those of my siblings and of my community. And so, you know, I have a deep, deep respect for, for educators across the board. Back to your question, how I see or understand the school board's and administration's role in the district, I think it really comes down to shared governance. You know, we don't make decisions in silos or irrespective of this, decisions being made elsewhere. I think it's important to keep in mind that, you know, we I think, uh, it's important to keep in mind that, uh, you know, we can come to the table and collaborate. We can find value in different beliefs, um, as long as we all hold truth that we are here to fight for public education and we are here to protect and fight for students. You know, with, with the concept of shared governance, I don't see, um, you know, any member or administrator coming in with, with, with a pre-agenda or a planned ways that things should go. You know, a- as long as we, we understand that we're here to make the best decisions possible on behalf of kids and our students, I, I think that, that gets to the center of, of what the role of district leadership, uh, of district leadership is and should be.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rhonda.
Hi, Andrew Becker here. Hello. As a school board member, how would you be an advocate for the districts, schools and students?
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I think in, in many ways, I, I am currently an advocate for, um, our district schools and our students. Again, I think our district is in a really unique position where we, there's a lot that we have accomplished. You know, even in the last five, ten years, we, we've made a lot of great progress. And, and there's still so much more for, for us to do. And so, uh, you know, being the third-largest school district in, in, in the state gives us, you know, the opportunity to, to collaborate, to be a leader, uh, to be a leader within the state and to be innovative. And so, as, as far as advocating for schools and districts, you know, I think leaning on my own personal, personal experience, my own experience as a student, that proximity that I have with students and families within our district. You know, using my voice, um, not to speak for others, but to shed light on other voices, to, to bring other voices to the table. You know, I, I think, and I know that me, if I were to be appointed, me serving on the school board is, is something that will tr- transcends, you know, my own individual position. I think it, it speaks to and sheds light on, um, what can be accomplished, right? I am a product of the school district. I, I call Green Bay home. I grew up here. And, you know, just recognizing what a critical role public education has had in my own life and sharing that with other students and community members and telling them that they can also one day, be in a place where they have the skills and experiences, um, to be val- to be a valued member on decision-making tables and decision-making spaces, I think, is, is something that I hold, um, really near and dear to my heart. So, it's kind of a long, um, you know, long-winded answer, but, uh, again, I think leaning on my own personal experiences, leveraging my proximity that I have with students and families in the community and, um, being a positive role model, um, for, for the generations to come is, is how I can be an advocate of our public schools and our students.
Thanks, Jessica. Um, this is Brenda Warren. Nice to see you. Could you please identify specific examples of situations where you have demonstrated a working style, communication skills, leadership skills, or decision-making skills that you think would be effective on a seven-member school board?
Yeah, of course. Um, so currently, um, in my, in my current professional role, I work on, um, I, I work on a team, right? I work on a very, uh, I, I work on a, on a very high-energy team. We are all, uh, bring a lot of energy and expertise to the table and, uh, we're very high-functioning. And sometimes, uh, it can be, you know, it can be interesting trying to navigate spaces where, um, there's so much energy and, and, uh, put into, into the work that's being done. Sometimes it can be hard to or difficult to find your place wi- within that. And so, really, you know, I would lean on, on my professional experiences and how I've been able to, to navigate that and really how I've been able to, to be a leader within. Over the summer, uh, an opportunity presented itself where, um, I, I was asked if, if I would consider being a, a project lead, specifically, uh, when it came to diversity, equity and inclusion. So now, my, uh, position, uh, has a more intentional focus and one of those, and, and something that's come along with that is leading my own team, my own high-functioning, energetic team through, uh, our, uh, diversity, equity and inclusion framework. And, and so again, I think that's a very specific and a very real and current example of how I have, uh, been a collaborator, how I have been able to navigate leading within, um, how I've been able to respect, um, others', uh, interests and skills and call upon them when different opportunities present, present themselves. You know, as long as the, the, the intent and, and the goal remains, remains the same, which here would be, you know, the betterment of our students and staff, I'm confident that I can lean on those skills to, to be a collaborator, uh, to be a good listener and, you know, to also, um, you know, push us forward, um, in, in certain instances. Additionally, aside from my professional role, I am part of, um, I am part of an organization, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Within, uh, this, um, organization, within my sorority, I hold leadership roles. I'm currently, I currently serve as the parliamentarian. And so, I have engaged in, worked with statewide leadership to, um, implement Robert's Rules of Order, review our policies and procedures. Um, and this has taught me how to, um, again, develop and implement a process that might seem a little foreign to, to most people. And also, it has taught me how to work with people of all ages. So, members of my sorority that, I, I'm probably one of the youngest ones. And so, uh, being able to work with people of all ages with different experiences and being respectful and, and keeping in mind that, again, collaborating, um, is, is what's most important. So, you know, my role in working to ensure that all students have access to high-quality education by centering equity and leveraging policy is, is, is a skill that I would bring to the table.
All right. Thank you so much, Jessica, for answering all of our questions. Uh, we've got a few minutes left. Um, and I want you to be able to mention anything else that you haven't had a chance to, um, certainly ask questions for us. But one thing that I want to follow up with, um, in full transparency, you and I have had a few conversations leading up to this interview about a potential conflict in your current role. So, I'm wondering if you could just speak to, um, what your plans would be with your, uh, professional position if you were to be appointed to the board?
Yeah. Thank you for your question, Eric. Um, you know, and I think first and foremost, it's important for me to make clear that, uh, you know, in my current professional role, I am not, uh, in a position where I am personally profiting from the school district in any, any way, especially, you know, financially. I did, uh, speak to the, uh, my, my direct supervisor in my current professional role, who passed the message along to the executive leadership, um, at my current employer. Um, and, you know, said, "Hey, this is an opportunity that has presented itself. I feel very strongly about being an advocate, um, for the, for the students in the district that I, that I was a part of, that I graduated from." And so, you know, the, the message that we received back was after, you know, the executive leadership reviewed, um, the, the situation, they did not see, um, a conflict in my ability to serve on the school board. And so, you know, if I were to be appointed and if there were to be foreseeable conflicts, I would make it, um, a point to, to work with the district's legal counsel and abstain from any votes that may constitute, uh, a potential conflict.
Perfect. Thank you for answering that. Um, anything else that you want to, uh, to mention? And, um, any questions that you have for us?
Yeah, um, I guess the, you know, the only other things that I would like to mention is, is one, thanking each and every one of you who, um, expressed their support and wanting to move me, um, forward to the interviews. You know, I, I appreciate, I appreciate that and I don't take that lightly. And, and so, you know, I wanna believe that, um, there are board members here that support my candidacy. And, and so, I just, I, I wanna say I'm appreciative of that. Ultimately, it's very important to me that, um, you know, I be given an opportunity to, to serve the community that has given so much to me. I hope our conversation has shown, you know, what I have to offer and, and that I would bring value as a board member. Um, and I look forward to the opportunity to, to serve alongside you.
Well, thank you so much, Jessica. We appreciate taking the time and, um, we will, uh, finish up interviews and, uh, have a decision before the night's over.
All right. Thank you so much for your time. Have a good night.
Thanks, Jessica. Beth, Rhonda just stepped out. Uh, so soon she comes back, I'll let you know.
When she gets back, Josh is available.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, Josh.
Hey, good evening.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
All right. So, uh, the plan is to go around, um, each one of us will ask one of the five questions that you should have received ahead of time. Um, any follow-up questions that may come up, we'll give you some time at the end to ask any questions and clarify anything that you feel like you might need to.
Sounds great. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Laura.
Hi, Josh. This is Laura McCoy.
Hi, Laura.
Hi. Um, first question, why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And what are the contributions that you think you can make to the leadership of our district?
Well, I, I come to you tonight as a, as a product of the Green Bay School District. I grew up in Green Bay, uh, went through, uh, schools on the West Side, graduated from West High School. Uh, I married into a, a longtime family of educators. Uh, my wife is a teacher in the district. Uh, uh, my, my in-laws are, are now retired district teachers. And on a personal, uh, level, I went to school and was trained to be a, a high school social studies teacher before it took me in a different direction. So, I've always, uh, been, A, appreciative for everything that I received from the Green Bay Area Public School District, but never really lost that spark or that, that interest that I, that I originally had in, in undergrad to try to give back and, and, uh, pass things on to the next generation. And I think that, that, uh, that really, uh, kind of bears itself out through a lot of my volunteer opportunities. I, I'm the vice president of the Board of Directors for the Center for Childhood Safety. Uh, I take an active role in, in a lot of organizations that, uh, that really s- speak to that youth development and educational, uh, piece. You know, I, from a, a broader perspective, uh, uh, when I saw this opportunity open up, I, I saw it as a great opportunity to give back to, uh, something that, that really has given so much to me. As a first-generation college student in my family, uh, and, uh, and being where I am, I, I certainly have to be appreciative for, for everything that helped me get here and anything I can do to give back to this, to this school district that's provided so much for me and for my family. I, I, I think I'd be a fool not to have, have at least attempted to apply for the open spot. Uh, as for what I can bring to the board, uh, in my, my professional life, I, I deal with, with a lot of, of difficult and complex issues every day. Uh, my, my job has me, uh, very, very analytical, day in and day out. I deal with, with, handle a lot of family issues. In fact, I'm a family law practitioner by trade. So, I see, uh, I see sort of on the, on the, in the legal system, the, the impact that, uh, the, that lack of support may have or, or, or deal with a lot of the family issues and the importance of education. Uh, so I'm seeing these in the court system and certainly want to try to, uh, to help foster a, a meaningful change at the, uh, at the district level. Uh, I also work as part of a team, uh, that has to collaborate, work together and find creative solutions to difficult problems every day. So, I think through, through my experience, through my, my occupation, through, uh, through the, the skills that, that helped me perform well in my job, that I'd be a, a good asset to, uh, to the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello there. This is Dawn Smith.
Hi, Dawn.
How are you?
Great.
Good. What are some issues you believe have been brought on by the pandemic? And as a board member, how would you prioritize and address these?
Well, I, I, I look at the pandemic really in, in a couple of different lenses. Uh, as strange as it may be to, to say, I, I look at it as it's forced us to be more creative and flexible, which is really an opportunity. Uh, but we also, it, it, through that opportunity, we, we can kind of look at that, the lens of, of how things went this spring versus the changes we saw. of of how things went this spring versus the changes we saw the summer and into the fall when we began the the school year in virtual learning. So I I think that that the the skill and flexibility of our our educational staff, our students, our families, our support system really shown through that that there were improvements. But that, from a personal perspective, as well as things may have gone for us, I'm not naive enough to think that there weren't challenges for other families in our district. I I I see everyday friends, colleagues, and other folks that that have had challenges, whether it's issues of of equity versus equality. Someone recently informed educated me on the difference between equity versus equality, where if we we really give everybody a pair of shoes, that would be equality, but making sure that every pair of shoes that fits is the equity piece. We we look at the technology that our students all had to begin the the school year. Everybody had the same Chromebooks and and perhaps the same technology, but the ability and support system at home to utilize that technology effectively certainly created challenges. I think we take a step further back. When I was preparing for this evening's meeting, I think the biggest biggest challenge and perhaps the largest priority that the pandemic brought for for our district is the issue of engagement. And and why is it that that there was a lack of engagement? I I've seen reports and and aware that there's a larger failure rate. I don't think that it's because our students are any less intelligent or that our our teachers are any less able to effectively teach. But I think that that the priority needs to be figuring out why there was a disconnect there. Was it a was it a lack of of perhaps resources for mental health and social and emotional well-being? Was it was it a lack of support at home that 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 our individual learners didn't have the resources they need needed in order to make the virtual experiences as successful as possible? Or was it a challenge in in adapting the to the virtual learning environment for some of our learners who are more hands-on learners, whether it's my my kindergartner who who loves to sit and and do do creative art projects or our our technology students who love to get into the shop and and create things? So I I think that 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 lack of engagement or the loss of engagement really needs to be a priority so that we can move forward and figure out where, you know, where that disconnect may have been. And so that not only can we prevent that from happening again, should there should there be any further need to to go back into a virtual structure, but also to improve our our learning and educating educational style here as we go forward and and transition back into what used to be our normal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Josh. It's Rhonda Sitnickow.
Hi, Rhonda.
Can you describe your understanding of the school board's role and administrator's role of the district? I'm sorry, the administration's role of the district?
Yeah, the the school board, as I understand it, really is is in charge of developing policy for for the district. Those policies can be can be brought forward and developed from the administrative staff, from board members, and from our our students, staff, and 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 any number of community members. But the board's role is really to make sure that there's solid solid policy put into place, keeping in mind the the mission statement to make sure that all of our students are college, career, and community ready. And also trusting that the administration can implement those policies. So in in developing those policies, there needs to be clarity so that the administration knows what the expectations are. But there also needs to be accountability in order to in order to provide feedback and follow up if those policies are being effectively implemented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Becker here. As a school board, hello, as a school board member, how would you be an advocate for the district's schools and students?
As a school board member, it it really frankly overlaps with very much of what I do on a daily basis. My job and my role as an attorney is to zealously advocate for my clients' best interests, for my clients' legal needs. In the family law context, we we advocate very often for for what is in the best interest of of a child who's in a in perhaps a custody battle or or a a personal safety situation. So I I think that that as as a board member, you need to be able to effectively advocate advocate. You need to be able to communicate your your clients, your your constituents' needs and desires, but you also need to be open and receptive to communication from from all areas so that you can make those those most informed decisions. Certainly, there's, if we look, take a look at at all of the conversations that we've had in in light of the the pandemic, certainly there's a wealth of of different perspectives and a wealth of of variety, of varied varied interests. But it's really the the board's member, a school board's members' job to to take that information, take all the information available and and make a reasoned and and appropriate decision, knowing that 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 those decisions frankly are going to be impacting the lives of 20-plus thousand students, not to mention all the staff that that is also impacted. So you need to be open, receptive, communicative, and transparent in those decisions so that that people can go forward and understand that you made the best decision within to the best of your ability when when acting on these folks' behalf.
Hi, Josh. This is Brenda Warren.
Hi, Brenda.
Hi. Our last question tonight is, could you please identify specific samples of situations where you have demonstrated a working style, communication skills, leadership skills, or decision-making skills that you think would be effective on a sovereign member's school board?
Yeah, I've I've had a lot of experience through my role in in our local church council. I currently serve as the the council treasurer. We're a fairly large congregation on the West Side. And we've had a lot of opportunities and and challenges over the years while while I've worked for the church council. When in the congregation of our our church's size, there's a lot of people that that have a lot of perspectives and and a lot of feedback on the decisions that are being made by by the church leadership. We, not terribly long ago, had an issue dealing with financial impropriety. And and there were competing interests and concerns at that time as to whether to to exact a pound of flesh, for lack of a better term, or to make the church whole and make sure everybody was able to move forward in a in an effective means. We were able to steer the church through through a very difficult time at that time. And I think everybody came out better, understanding that we were implementing the church's mission to 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 do do what's right as as we're guided by the Bible. So I I think that that as we as we look at at that experience and and the the challenges, the the concerns, sometimes the anger, I I think it's important to take a step back and and be able to to balance those interests and understanding that after some time, some of that anger may wane and we still want to make a reasoned decision. In my my professional role, I I have a lot of opportunities to work with the the team at my firm along with with opposing counsel and to create effective, creative, and and reasoned solutions to some very challenging problems. And I think that as a school board member, those those skills are equally valid. Certainly, if we look at the pandemic, there's no, I don't think that there's a single right decision that that's made, especially knowing that the the science seems to change quite frequently. So it's important that 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 we be able to to make make creative solutions that address the 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 variety of needs for all of our learners, all of our staff. And and I I do have a lot of experience in that that area that that would be helpful in in that regard.
All right. Thank you very much, Josh. Any other things that you didn't get a chance to mention about yourself or that you want to make sure that we know? And then after that, any high-level questions you might have for us?
I don't think that there's too much about myself that wasn't already put out in my my application materials. Again, I'm a product of the district. I have two beautiful girls who are nice enough to let me use their basement office this evening for for the interview. Couple of questions that I have, and I don't, I know that the request has been for high-level questions and I I don't want to overspeak. One of the questions I had was was if if anyone is willing to share, what what do you believe over the last 12 months have been has been the board's greatest success? And and what what's been the the most significant challenge as as you've navigated through the the pandemic?
Yeah, so one of the reasons why we wanted to to try to stay somewhat high level is that all all six board members could certainly answer that very differently. A lot of very different takes. And we have to be careful of what we're we're posted for and to be able to discuss. And certainly would love to kind of all share our views on that, but we have to be careful about getting into too many rabbit holes, so.
Understood.
Yeah.
I wasn't trying to bait anybody.
Appreciate the question.
And and I guess a little bit less less baited question, I suppose, would be, how do you feel that the board works collaboratively collaboratively together? Excuse me. There's a lot of work that the board certainly does behind the scenes in order to prepare for work sessions and monthly board meetings. How would you describe the the board's relationship?
I I mean, just speaking for myself, but as the entire board, I think we have a good working relationship. Obviously, we have to be careful for walking quorum issues when discussing things, so that presents some challenges. But overall, as as a board, I I think we have a great working relationship and all dedicated to helping move our district forward.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything else for us, Josh?
Nothing further. Thank you so much for having me tonight.
Yeah, we appreciate your time. Thank you so much. And we should have an answer before the night's over.
Sounds great. Thanks, everybody.
Good night, Josh. So we are running about 20 minutes ahead of schedule. If you need to stretch, Stan, it doesn't look like Chad is here yet, but if everyone's ready when Chad enters, we'll we'll keep moving forward. All right, Beth, we're all set.
Sounds great. Thank you. Here's Chad.
Good evening, Chad.
Hello.
Thank thank you for joining us.
Yes, thank you for having me.
My name is Eric Van Nuville with the Board of Education for the Green Bay Area Public School District. Obviously, you're here to interview for our vacant seat. Uh, so we'll go around asking each board member will ask one of the five questions that we sent you ahead of time. Um, at the end, we'll give you an opportunity to uh, say anything that you may have not been able to get out in the other questions.
Okay.
All right. So we'll start with Laura.
Hi, Chad. I'm Laura McCoy. Um, our first question is, why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And what are the contributions you think you can make to the leadership of the district?
I guess why I want to be on the school board is I see our educational system in the community as a community-wide effort. And even though I don't have uh, children in the school district, I think the school district itself or education of our community members is vital for creating a successful community. And I believe with my background in education, uh, teaching, and also with my background in having like foster children with uh, dealing with their more at-risk kind of youth and the individual educational plans that I've had to deal with with my foster children, that definitely kind of engaged me more into the educational process and understanding the overall educational uh, challenges that some students face and the overall districts themselves that they can face those same challenges. And I guess uh, my background in coming from like an inner-city school and Milwaukee Public Schools uh, also saw like the diversity challenges within high schools. And saw that that is a big barrier for a lot of students, whether they're, you know, from the minority or the majority of the students that are in there. And then also just working on curriculum and budget management uh, within the college level of education, just saw how challenging that can be. And I feel like I could possibly address or like help out with some of those uh, possible issues that come up with uh, any like board or kind of like curriculum or budget kind of manner matters within the Green Bay Public School District.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hello, Chad. This is Dawn Smith. Um, hi. What are some issues you believe have been brought on by the pandemic? And as a board member, how would you prioritize and address these?
Uh, well, I think the pandemic highlighted quite a few things that are very similar among all aspects of areas of business and within school districts. I think one of the major one was financial kind of issues, uh, whether it be just financial on the side of the uh, districts themselves uh, with funding and trying to manage the overall budgets and how to like work with like in-person versus, you know, a remote learning issues. Uh, also the families themselves dealing with financial situations of just getting kids access to the overall remote kind of learning uh, platforms. Also, like food, uh, we saw like many chances for getting uh, maybe like lower income or in-need families of uh, meals uh, using the student lunch uh, programs. Um, I also highlighted the access. So we saw many students having troubles accessing the online platforms. Either it's because they didn't have like a uh, device to access those platforms, or it was the Wi-Fi issues themselves. Um, we know that like the Green Bay area is fairly good with their overall Wi-Fi, but more like the rural districts definitely had a issue with uh, the Wi-Fi kind of access. But sometimes families who just supporting the overall Wi-Fi itself can be a big barrier to kind of like work work with that online platform. Uh, engagement was a huge issue, I think, with uh, our students using online platforms. Um, doing in-person, uh, please, speaking from experience, just engaging students is a whole lot easier. Doing it in-person versus an online format where people tend to disengage and try to either multitask or just do something else altogether. Um, and especially if we don't have to share our camera view like we are right now. If we're just like, you know, not showing our camera view and just showing like, say, a picture or initials, we could be doing something totally different to not even engage in the overall learning process. And then um, kind of compounding that, you know, with the access and engagement is language barriers in some other families. Uh, because we have a diverse population within our district, uh, just sometimes language itself is a lot easier to see and engage with in-person versus online where that um, recognizing our our overall facial expressions and things like that, uh, the language kind of like translation sometimes just isn't there. So I think as a board member, we definitely have to address those issues. Uh, access would be trying to get our students all like uniform access, whether it be a device or programs or resources for getting family those access to Wi-Fi uh, possibilities. Uh, engagement to possibly be working with the families or parents themselves. I mean, uh, even when we're in person, we should definitely be promoting engagement with our within our families because a lot of learning does go on at home. And we really should have the family or the parent kind of like working with us for engagement, especially if we do come to this situation again sometime in the future. And then language, I think that's just going to be an ever, you know, present barrier within a school district that has a diverse population. Just trying to work with the different kind of language barriers and try to find ways that we can uh, either provide translations or uh, translators or something like that where we uh, promote kind of like diversity and or bilingual kind of language uh, speaking.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, Chad. Rhonda Sitnikow here.
Hi.
Um, describe your understanding of the school board's role and administration's role in the districts.
Um, I guess from what I kind of looked, uh, the school board itself, I guess, is to its overall job or role is to establish goals for the overall district itself. Um, also establish like guidelines, um, share information with the community, engage the overall community in the overall process, create a policy for the district itself, allocate resources for the district. Um, and as for like administration, like for like the superintendent kind of a level, I guess the communication between the board and superintendent has to be uh, ever-present, uh, transparent and and clear. And kind of both ways to make sure both entities are communicating well with each other. And the administrator role, I guess, is more in the direction process, implementing the overall policies, allocating, or like uh, giving those resources or finding ways to use those resources that the board kind of like allocated those funds for. So I guess that would be uh, my definition of the board and versus administrator.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hello, Andrew Becker.
Hi.
Hi. As a school board member, how would you be an advocate for the districts, schools, and students?
Okay. Um, I guess uh, being an advocate would be definitely meeting with the schools themselves as as best as I can, especially the educators, since they're the first line uh, kind of with our students and our parents. So getting their viewpoint of what kind of needs or issues that are present in our school district. Uh, being part of a board, sometimes we can get a uh, step-away view kind of. So it's hard to sometimes step into their shoes unless you really engage with them and find the actual like personal or familial kind of like issues that are present within the classrooms themselves. Uh, listening to the community needs that are out there, uh, there's definitely platforms for listening to the community, whether it's online, uh, community forums, uh, just chat rooms, things like that, where the community can express their overall um, either pleasure with the overall board or displeasure and just trying to address those uh, especially displeasure kind of uh, issues that the community has. Um, also promote like active learning. Um, passive learning is okay. Uh, but if you're not actively learning the material or actively present within the learning environment, you're definitely not going to retain that information, and it's definitely not going to be uh, a fun engagement process for you. And it's just doesn't work as well, and you definitely can disengage a lot faster if you're not actively kind of in the process of learning and being a participant in the learning process yourself. And then I also want to highlight the overall well-roundedness of students as an important uh, or vital kind of factor. Uh, good grades are excellent, but if you're not a well-rounded student, uh, we're finding most uh, higher universities or colleges, things like that, they're kind of steering away from looking at overall grades and ACT ACT scores as like an end-all kind of like, you know, admission factor where we should be looking at this student as a whole. What other things are they doing? Uh, volunteering, community activities, uh, overall uh, outside activities, sports, all those uh, family kind of engagement opportunities, uh, religious opportunities as well, uh, looking at those uh, as part of the student as well, I think is vital. And promoting those as as a very important aspect of our overall education and uh, growth as a human being.
Hi, Chad. This is Brenda Warren.
Hi.
Um, this is our last question. Please identify specific examples of situations where you have demonstrated a working style, communication skills, leadership skills, or decision-making skills that you think would be effective on a seven-member board?
Uh, so with working with a seven-member board or a smaller uh, kind of board like seven members, definitely you have to have a more open and kind of transparent kind of communication between all board members. Uh, I found that using a more of a ask kind of like get opinions from all aspects of the board and you know, taking all those opinions into the overall kind of like way we can kind of work through an issue, uh, either like jotting them all down on a whiteboard or something like that, getting it all out in the open so everybody's able to share their overall ideas. And then if you have the expertise in any of those areas, uh, provide the coaching for those other other members of the board to kind of like get them on board uh, with the overall plan or just try to educate them on what your views are and what your overall expertise is on those areas. Um, also, I've worked on many committees within higher education. So I've worked on our overall alumni committee. I'm the chair of the Alumni Council here at Bellin College. So I'm definitely dealing with the alumni and working with engagement opportunities with the overall alumni, planning events, uh, working with the overall budget. I speak at graduation opportunities uh, within the college and uh, homecoming events. I work, uh, I work with the Workplace Culture Organization or uh, Committee here on campus as well, looking to increase the overall diversity and inclusion and the overall workplace culture itself here on campus. Um, so I'm kind of co-chairing that as well. So kind of working with uh, other members of our faculty and staff and just trying to develop ideas on how we can increase the overall value of being an employee here at Bellin College. Um, also leaning on our overall expertise that we have in the room. Uh, if I'm not the expert on any material or anything like that, uh, I'm first to say that, and I will definitely lean on people that are expertise in that area and look for the data that uh, kind of like helps support the overall processes or any ideas that we're kind of like looking for to kind of like improve our district. So that's my answer for that one.
Chad, thank you very much. Um, want to give you the opportunity to mention anything that you may not have been able to fit into uh, our five questions. And then if you have any high-level questions for us, I'd be happy to answer those.
Sure. I guess, uh, I feel like I do have quite a bit of experience, uh, again, with education. Uh, I've been teaching at the college level for seven, eight years now, uh, more uh, as an adjunct for the like the first two years and now full-time after that. I've spoken spoken at a few national conferences uh, on student success. So just trying to increase the overall student success through various uh, online or hands-on kind of methods uh, in teaching. I've also spoken to like creating uh, greater opportunities uh, for healthcare career engagement or exploration within high schools. Uh, as part of my role here at Bellin College, I do have great connection or a lot of connections with our uh, area high schools and bringing out uh, a hands-on kind of activity to area high schools to promote healthcare careers. Since we see that healthcare is going to be a major uh, opportunity for job placement within the United States with the overall aging population that we have. So healthcare careers are going to be ever-growing, and there's great diversity in healthcare. Whether it be patient care or like IT, there's a place for everybody within there. So highlighting all the different careers, I think, is totally vital. So bringing that out in the open, which I think a lot of our districts are doing, but providing in more like a hands-on kind of uh, method or a hands-on learning kind of opportunity is definitely uh, a good way to kind of engage students so that they are more uh, present in the conversation versus uh, kind of like a passive learner in that that area. So I guess that's my overall expertise is uh, just bringing uh, I guess, a relationship to education and uh, expertise and kind of like uh, diversity and student success and things like that. So.
Any questions for us, Chad?
I guess, um, if uh, or whoever gets on the board, uh, when you first get on, is there like a training kind of opportunity for like when you first become a board member, is they like a mentorship kind of like opportunities? Or kind of like, how does that process work with like, uh, just getting on board with this situation?
Yeah, that's a a great question. In fact, I uh, talked to our superintendent about that today. Um, definitely something that uh, he'd be willing to to help out with. Um, I would be in contact and could provide any uh, basic information. To say that we have a formal training or mentoring program is not accurate, but certainly want to um, get this person up to speed as fast as possible. Uh, there's a lot of work in front of us and um, need this uh, seventh member to get up to speed. So um, we'll definitely uh, no shortage of supports um, to wherever this person might need it. Good question.
Okay. And uh, like, how soon are is this vacancy? Like, is this person going to step into this role? And how much time is going to be like required of this person to uh, be part of board uh, meetings and uh, committees and things like that?
So the uh, the first part or, you know, the first part of your question is soon. So we would look to um, have this person take the oath of office tomorrow and then um, be ready to uh, attend our first board meeting, which is next Monday, March 8th. Um, so we would like them to join us for that meeting. In terms of the amount of time, um, I don't know that I can accurately answer that question. Obviously, uh, this year has been like any unlike any other. Um, and uh, really, it's the amount of time uh, that you want to put into it. It's definitely could be a full-time job.
Okay. Um, I guess that's it. I guess my major concern is just getting on board and getting up to speed as fast as possible and just making sure that I do the best job. and just making sure that I do the best job as, as possible with the current situation. So.
All right. Thank you so much, Chad. Appreciate your time. We should have an answer before the end of the night.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Good night.
Good night.
So because we are running a little bit of schedule, I had a schedule. Beth made a few calls and just moved a few around. So we're going to move Laura Layton then up to 7:15. And then Denise, wait, excuse me. And then Rachel will be at eight o'clock. So we'll just basically bumping Laura. So Laura will be next at 7:15, Denise will be at 7:35, and Rachel will be at eight o'clock.
Thanks, Beth.
No problem.
Everybody ready? All right, Beth, we're ready for Laura.
Oh, great. Here she is.
Good evening, Laura.
Hi.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
This is Eric Van den Hooibl with the Green Bay School District Board of Education. Appreciate you taking the time. We will have each board member ask one of the five questions that we gave you ahead of time. When we're finished with those five questions, you'll have an opportunity to mention anything else that you may not have had a chance to say and ask any high level questions of us. Do you have any questions right now?
I don't. Thank you.
All right, then we'll hand it over to Laura McCoy.
Hi, Laura.
Hi.
Question number one, why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And what are the contributions you think you can make to the leadership of our district?
Well, the serving in the capacity of a school board is something I've been interested in. I've done other types of volunteer activities. I just haven't had the time. And I've tried to volunteer in different capacities within the district and at a local level with my, you know, my school, neighborhood school. But I haven't had the chance to really dedicate myself to a position that would require that of the school board. So right now, it's something that just it came up and it was a great opportunity for me to explore it because of my time available and also just my desire to provide leadership at this level. Something that I could contribute would be I have a commitment to lifelong learning. I am currently pursuing my doctorate degree in the School of Education studying leadership. And it's also something that I think my education and experience would contribute to. I have employment as a manager supervisor in a formal leadership role, but then also I've worked frontline employees positions all the way through and I've done some executive coaching. So I feel like I have a well-rounded experience in education to bring that in. Also, I have a certain level of professionalism that I'd like to bring and that's probably one of the those are some of the strengths that I would definitely bring to the to the board.
Thank you.
Laura, can I ask a follow up? You mentioned that you hadn't been able to do this before because of the time. Can you speak to has something changed that you feel like you do have the time now?
Yes, actually, yes, I had on well, I've been employed with the United Nation for 20 plus years. And actually with I was my past position, my most recent position was with the tribal chairman. And it was a contracted position. And that changed actually was for the chairman for the last three years, but with COVID, they've also they've had to reduce a lot of positions. So the position was changing to work with nine members of the O'Nita Business Committee, which is our elected officials. And with the end of my contract with virtual school, my husband and I just made a decision that I would not renew my contract and that I would stay home with our children. I have a first grader and a fourth grader. So with virtual school, it was just worked out to be a perfect opportunity for me to focus on them with virtual learning. And then also to focus on writing my dissertation, which has also been something that's kind of been hanging out there. I've done with the coursework for a couple of years. So I'm on target to graduate this December.
Perfect. Thank you, Laura.
Good evening, Laura. This is Dawn Smith. What are some issues you believe have been brought on by the pandemic? And as a board member, how would you prioritize and address these?
Well, one issue I think that is clear that's come out is just the challenges we face of social isolation and those those needs for human interactions. But I think most importantly, what's come forward are the issues that have sort of always been there, but they're just more at the forefront now because of the pandemic. And that for me, I think would be the role of schools in our society and how they have such a greater role than beyond education. And how, you know, there for many, they are the place for for meals, for mental health. You know, much more beyond just an education. So I think that's really become evident and the need to have that support there for our students. And if it's not in the academic setting for school, I think that it's also a greater need to look at where is our money going for tax dollars? How do we support our community members? And, you know, is it fair to have this entire burden with the school system? And I also think that anything that's another thing that's come out of this has been the the need for Wi-Fi. Better access for internet, you know, there's a lot of people have fast internet connections, but some don't. That's a struggle. And I think also I know that the city is looking at racism as a public health crisis. That's definitely, I think that's been illustrated by the challenges that many of the communities have faced during this pandemic. O'Nita, the native community has been hit hardest with number of deaths, percentage of cases resulting in in death. And also, I think the cultural awareness of multi-generational homes. And I know so many people that are, you know, have extended families, close generations of families living in their home and, you know, that's it's they're unable to take the risk to return to school currently. And are trying to make things work in terms of making sure that their children are able to do virtual education. But being aware that everybody doesn't have that, you know, the opportunity to attend school out of the risk for the rest of the people in their home.
Thank you.
Hi, Laura. It's Rhonda Sitnikow.
Hi.
Can you describe your understanding of the school board's role and the administration's role in the district?
Well, I look at the the school board is there to set the vision, create, you know, a shared visions for the school board for the district. And they oversee, you know, the administration or superintendent, I look at as like the CEO of of, you know, the school district. So the board is there to support and get, you know, feedback and listen, you know, marry the communities, the teachers, the students, the administrations to kind of hear everybody and and pull that all together and make sure that everybody's moving in the direction to meet the vision that's created by the district and by the board. Also, I think the budget responsibility is important and to be able to look at where are we spending our resources, looking at how do we work together, you know, having that ability to cooperate and collaborate as a team for the board is very important. And also accountability, you know, to hold ourselves accountable and to hold administration accountable. And just having that those important pieces of of any board for any type of organization, those things are important, especially for one over something as large as the Green Bay School District.
Thank you.
Hello, Andrew Becker here. As a school board member, how would you be an advocate for the districts, schools and students?
I would be an advocate, I think. First of all, you know, one of the things, the strengths that I I bring to what I would bring to the board and also any position is that my ability to, I think of big picture and yet detailed. So to look at what is our data telling us? Also to look at the the voices behind the data. So I also think it's important to look at the systems, the policies. But then also go down into the people. So, for example, one of the things I had looked up the district's report card from, I think the most recent one I was able to find was 2019, in which only, I think nearly 45% of the district is white. So we have a very diverse district. And I think as the board, we want to help support having teachers, administrators and materials in in our schools that looks like our community. So I think that that's something, you know, I'm a huge advocate for diversity, equity and inclusion. And I think that that's another thing that I would bring and that needs to be considered in advocating for the schools and advocating for the students. And I think also we need to make sure that we're being mindful of the data. And then again, like I said earlier, the data, what it's telling us, and then also what are people saying behind that? Are people is everybody contributing, looking at the full picture, you know, if there's survey data is great, but if everybody's not responding or people aren't willing to reply to a survey, how do we dig deeper and get the feedback, especially from areas in communities where we need to build trust?
Laura, this is Brenda Warren. Our last question, could you please identify specific examples of situations where you have demonstrated a working style, communication skills, leadership skills, or decision-making skills that you think would be effective on a seven-member school board?
Sure. I think my role, most recent role with the United Nation, working with the chairman. I had not worked in government prior to that. I'd worked with the gaming division and with the nation. And so it was kind of a business environment and then going to a government. And so one of the things that I had the opportunity to do was to work a lot with the community, community members, create communication pieces for a wide level of audiences. So that was something that I was able to do. I think one of the the big things that we did at O'Nita, they continue to do as a form of our decision-making is by consensus. So as you can imagine, having a vote is a lot easier than I think than consensus, although I kind of think that that's and also another good way to do things. But through consensus, what we did is we had to discuss things. And this was for the for major decisions, discuss things to the point where everybody could live with the decision. Maybe it wasn't the the best decision. I always said if if everybody's on the same page, it might be different paragraphs. But if everybody's on the same page and can live with that decision, that was how we operated through consensus and that was through discussion. A lot of facilitation and communication. So I think that bringing that experience in addition to just overall facilitation, which I've done is a positive and could be a positive for this board. And also having been a manager for 11 years, I'm able to talk with people about performance. I've had to do the hard things in terms of firing and hiring. And I just have have that experience as well. That would be good. And a lot of experience in strategic planning. I've done conducted strategic planning with executive level leaders as well as government officials for the last 11 years.
Anything I didn't want to interrupt you. I didn't know if you were still okay. So anything else that you wanted to mention that you didn't get a chance to in any of the questions that we asked? And then any questions that you might have for us?
Okay, let me think. I'm gonna think of you asked about working style, communication skills, leadership skills, decision-making. Um, I can't think of anything else other than, you know, I think I would bring a a good perspective from my background and again, my education experience. I'm eager to do my part to try to contribute and to support the direction of the of the district. And I really think that's that's the main, the main thing. I can think it would be a great addition to the board.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for us?
I do. What is the what is the culture of the district overall in terms of like organizational culture? How would you best describe the district?
Yeah, so it's it's a great question. It's difficult to answer in this forum because as six elected board members, I'm sure we would all answer a little bit differently. So I probably can't get into that today, but if you are selected, you certainly would have the opportunity to come in and be a part of the board and start to assess that culture.
Okay. And how about how many hours a week? Or I'm sure that varies by people's availability and involvement as well. But what would is there an estimate of about hours of weeks spent on board related work?
Yeah, it's hard to answer that, given everything that we've been through in the last year.
Right.
Definitely has been an overwhelming experience. I don't even know that I could speak to you what normal looks like. What I would say from my experience is that the more time you can put into it, the better board member that you're going to be and it'll be each of your individual situations that determines how much time you put into it.
Okay. Thank you. This is really hard to talk to you guys when you can't see your faces. I mean, not the masks, but even your eyes, because like right now you're just kind of all little.
Yeah, and we have to look kind of up off in the distance at the television screen. We're used to being up on the screen with you for the last year, and this is our first time back in person.
Yeah, and that's where we are now. So.
As it's pros and it's cons.
Absolutely.
Well, Laura, thank you so much for taking the time to speak with us tonight. We should have a decision before the evening is over.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks, Laura.
Bye bye.
As soon as everyone's ready, Denise is here.
Are you all set, Eric? For me to allow her in?
Yep, it looks like everybody's ready.
Great. Here she is.
Good evening, Denise.
Hello.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thanks for having me.
So we will spend time asking the five questions that we gave you ahead of time. We'll go around the room. Each board member will have an opportunity to ask the question. And then at the end, we'll give you an opportunity to share anything that you may not have have been able to share during the questions and any follow-ups that you might have.
Sure.
All right. With that said, we'll hand it over to trustee Laura McCoy.
Hi, Denise.
Hello, Laura.
Question number one, why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And what are the contributions you think you can make to the leadership of our district?
Well, I would say first and foremost, I am a mom to a special needs student that attends the school district here. So I have a little bit of a different perspective of the inner workings of the district here. I deal with some different people that not everyone gets a chance to deal with and create relationships with, which are amazing relationships. I can't stress enough how amazing the staff is here and what they have gone through through virtual learning and the pandemic to try to meet the needs of these kids is just it's it's really incredible what they've done. I would also like to say that I am a big listener. I love listening to what people have to say, what their ideas are. I like to be a person who is open to both sides of any, any conversation going on. I like to collect all the information and make a educated assessment. I've, I guess I could also say a lot of friends and family have come to me in the last few months and asked me why I haven't decided to take on a role like this yet. And this one just happened to come about with with Christina sadly leaving. I really, I really enjoyed her as part of the board. I thought she was a really amazing advocate for our students and I would really like the opportunity to take the to take her place and be that strong advocate for for our children in this district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Hello there. This is Dawn Smith.
Hello, Dawn.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, good. What are some issues you believe have been brought on by the pandemic? And as a board member, how would you prioritize and address these?
Again, I would say coming from a spec ed point of view, I'm just going to talk about that for a minute if that's okay. It was definitely an uphill battle for our families to try to get our needs met here in this district, not for lack of the district trying and for lack of resources. It was just, it's really hard to have your spec ed students sitting in front of a screen. And I'm really appreciative that our district was able to accommodate a small percentage of our students to get back into in-person learning for those hands-on therapies and things that they really need every single day. And I know that even getting to that point for you guys was a real struggle. I really you guys just do some really incredible work under some really intense pressure from the community and you, you, you continue to advocate for the kids and just keep pushing forward and you've really done a nice job in the face of adversity, especially with what seems to be a community that kind of at some points wasn't very supportive of us. But you continue to be supportive of of the district and the students that are in here and continue to advocate for their safety and their health and wellbeing. And I I appreciate that about the board. I also think I, as a lot of the other people have said, mental health was and always has been an issue in this district. And I feel that it's something that we should continue to address and talk about and be advocates for, you know, a safe mental space for our students to be in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Hi Denise, it's Rhonda. Hello.
Hello, Rhonda. How are you?
I'm good. Can you describe your understanding of the school board's role and administration's role in the district?
I believe that the board has a, in my eyes, a very supportive role in trying to navigate a sense of compassion and a sense of respect to every student and and the teachers and people that are a part of this district and trying to be like the ship's captain here, you know, you you lay down, you lay down the law and and I I would say also working together and trying to create positive forward for moving solutions for all of our students, whether it's like in a virtual setting or a personal setting, you know, we're we're in in school in person now or you know, trying to collaborate, being on the board, making big decisions in that way. Just I would say just, you know, generally being a good, present, open, transparent advocate for our students and staff.
Um, Denise?
Yes, Rhonda.
Um, can you just maybe elaborate a little bit more on the administration's role than comparatively to the board?
I would really love to see a better relationship between the administration and the school board as far as transparency is concerned. I've I've watched a lot of board meetings. I've been very attentive for the past year and a half or so and kind of have a good idea of the relationship between the board and some of the upper administration. I would really love to see them come together more at the same table and have those conversations about what we can do to make it a positive experience for everyone in the district at an equitable level. I I think maybe there's a lot of talk going on in in separate parts of the district that maybe you haven't been privy to, or maybe you didn't know what's happening. And I think it would be really great to just have everybody at that table and have a good conversation about what our what our goals are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Hi Denise. Andrew Becker.
Hi, Andrew.
Hey, as a school board member, how would you be an advocate for the districts, schools and students?
Like I've said, I would, I'm a member of SEEK, which is Special Education Council. It's a group of individuals, both parents and staff members that are working to better educate and disseminate information to the families in the district about how to navigate school, how to navigate your IEP. You know, what kind of services we have out in the community for them. Basically, just be an ear and I'm a really, like I said before, I'm a big listener. I'm really a huge advocate of getting out there and, you know, getting your hands dirty per se, meeting families and just understanding really where they're coming from and how we can truly help. Like another thing would be equity for all schools. I know that there was some discussion that's been tabled, I'm assuming, for the redesign 2030. I would love to be part of that conversation and make sure that all of our schools are being, you know, equitably distributed, things that they need, upgrades, they they need to accommodate class sizes. I know class sizes is a huge thing right now. Make sure we have enough space for those students and they feel safe and comfortable in their learning environments. I think that's a it's a huge thing.
Hi Denise, this is Brenda Warren.
Hello, Brenda.
Hi. Could you please identify specific examples of situations where you have demonstrated a working style, communication skills, leadership skills, or decision-making skills that you think would be effective on a seven-member school board?
Sure. I previously have sat in on my Neighborhood Association Council as secretary, so I have a little bit of an idea of like organizational level at a at a board like this. Trying to have conversations about making your neighborhood and your community better, bringing families together, making it exciting to live where you live, getting to know people, getting, you know, getting out there and trying to make it more of a community. That was something I was super involved with for the last couple of years. I also sat on a board for Infinite Wonder, which is a nonprofit here in town. We were able to donate, I believe it was nine different kinds of swings to different parks in the community. So if you go to Perkins Park, or if you are a family that goes to Colburn Park or maybe Bay Beach, there's a few adaptive swings out there for families to use and exercise and have that face-to-face interaction. That's like really important at those young ages. I've also sat on SEEK, like I said, I'm just a board member on SEEK, trying to move things forward for us in the district to make things happen for our families and make them feel like they truly understand where they are and who to reach out to for resources and they feel knowledgeable in in providing resources for for teachers or Or when they sit down to their IEP, they feel comfortable advocating for their student. They don't feel stuck. They feel understand, like they feel like they understand what's going on with their IEP and what, what's going on with their child's program and what's in their future. Oh yeah, I've also sat on Keys, which is our school PTO. We also did a little bit of a revamp of our playground over there, which I sat on the committee for that. And we were able to get some new swings and some new equipment installed there. Kids super, super enjoy it, probably the best thing to happen at my son's school in quite some time. We were also able to install a couple of ADA swings for the kids in the moderate to severe autism department at my son's school, which is, makes up about 20% of the population of students over there, which is a little bit higher than some of the other schools in the district. And I, I, I love seeing them every day. I, I've been dropping my son off for a month now for in-person learning. And it, I, I love their faces. I, I love seeing them. I love that, that we're providing an amazing place for them to just thrive and, and continue to be those kids that are, they're moving forward, you know.
Denise, thank you for taking the time to answer all of those questions for us. Is there anything about yourself that you wanted to mention that you didn't get a chance to? And then any high-level questions that you might have for us?
I don't really have any high-level questions for you guys, to be honest. Like I said, I, I've been paying attention to the board meetings for some time now. And I know maybe some of you recognize my voice from calling in for SEEK. I've been a big advocate for them to try to disseminate some information to our families and try to be a support system for them. And I'm, I, I'm going to continue to be an advocate. I'm going to continue to be on SEEK. I'm going to continue to push forward and get what's best for our kids. It's, it's very important to me. So I really appreciate your time tonight, guys. This is really cool.
Well, thank you so much for applying Denise, for stepping up and we should have a decision before the end of the night.
Sounds great Eric. You guys have a great night. Thank you so much.
Night Denise. All right, we'll keep an eye on Rachel, the last candidate. She comes in before eight o'clock, we'll get started. When she gets here.
Is everybody ready for me to let Rachel in?
Good. Yes, thank you Beth.
Here she is.
Good evening Rachel, can you hear me?
Good evening, I can.
Are you able to turn your camera on Rachel?
Let me see. Is that better? There we go.
Yeah, there we go. No, no problem. Thank you so much for your flexibility and joining us tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, so my name is Eric Van Nuville with the Board of Education. What we will do tonight is take time to ask you the five questions that we sent you ahead of time. We'll go around the room, each board member asking one question. And then at the end, we'll give you time to mention anything that may not have come out in your answers and give you an opportunity to ask some high-level questions at the end.
Sure.
All right, and with that, I'll hand it over to Trystee Laura McCoy.
Hi Rachel.
Hi Lori.
The first question is, why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And what are the contributions you think you can make to the leadership of this district?
Yeah, thanks for asking the question. I am a teacher at heart. I was a specialized teacher there in Green Bay for about seven, eight years. And when I was student teaching 20 years ago, one of the principals at the cooperating school had said to me, you have qualities that just can't be taught. And what does that mean? I don't know, but I think at the core of it is that I want what's best for kids. I want to advocate for them. I want to meet them where they are and provide them what they need to meet their goals that they, where they want to be in their goals of life. So how do you do that? You have proper curriculum, you support teachers. You, you know, try to support families so that families are healthy and work with the community for a strong community. And I think those are, are what I'd love to advocate for, for students. I'm also one that is not afraid to use my voice and to jump in when there's a need. For example, when Green Bay was implementing Read 180 and they said, anyone want to teach Read 180? And I said, absolutely, I will jump in and teach Read 180. When Common Core was being adopted and they were looking for a math representative to come to the district office, I said, I would be happy to participate in that and be the representative. So I think those are some of the qualities that I can bring to the school board.
Thank you.
Hello Laura, how are you? Sorry, Rachel. Laura.
I think I said Lori, I'm sorry Laura.
This is Dawn Smith. What are some issues you believe have been brought on by the pandemic? And as a board member, how would you prioritize and address these?
Right, good question, thank you. I think three come to mind. One, mental health. Two, again, looking at the discrepancy in achievement. And I think it's too early to know, but has that grown? How, what is the extent of that, I should say. And number three is, I think a broader societal issue of, of trust that will eventually kind of, as we start interacting, some more, kind of be more pronounced, I should say, than it is now. Number one, going back to number one being mental health. I think that Green Bay is so fortunate to have so many resources. So school nurses, school psychs, school social workers, great student service departments. And I think that we can use them to try to identify if students are struggling, what does that look like? Maybe a curriculum that's implemented. I, I know if you're, if you are aware of trauma-informed care, there are, are things like ACEs or CAPS that can be used that maybe school psych and school nurses can work together to identify in the, to identify within staff and within students that we can kind of identify those when students are back. Number two, larger gaps. I think that's going to take some time looking at discrepancies in achievement. And may I ask if, did you guys get waivers for standardized testing this year? Or did, did they, did they do that online?
They, yeah, from the federal level, they did not grant us waivers. They gave some flexibility, but they did not give waivers to not implement the tests.
Okay, so yeah, that, I mean, I would add, try to advocate for that. I know that as a teacher, obviously you, you work with what you have. So yeah, I know student services is often bought down by standardized tests. But if there's a way that some collaboration could happen so that whether you use those standardized tests for data retreats and kind of see where kids are and then make long-term planning, or you know, use teachers' kind of anecdotal records and, and use their, their voices to listen to them, to see what they recommend. The third is societal confusions that might be apparent in school around trust. And that is something I think we all need to look at, every piece in this community and how we rebuild after a pandemic and while we were separate for so long. And that is when I, I think we would all have to put our heads together.
Thank you.
Hi, Rachel, it's Rhonda Sitnikow.
Hello.
Hi, could you describe your understanding of the school board's role and the administration's role in the district?
Yeah, I sure can. I liked this one. I understood, or I kind of came to, to understand that as the school board is the glue that binds the, the Green Bay schools to its community. And I think that administration is, they kind of look out for any areas that might need re-gluing or some more areas of interest, some more areas of attention so that they would come to the school board and say, we need this area or this area. And they're, they also help glue those two things together.
Could you just, I guess, tell me more about the glue? When you mentioned the school board.
Yeah.
And you said it's the glue to the community. Can you just tell me more about that?
Yeah, so I think the community looks to the school to provide, obviously, the education for their, their students. And that is staffing and curriculum and all of the things that go into school. So the school board is really the glue. They have to come up with all of those things to put into place that the community kind of, you know, looks, looks to the schools to have in place. And so that is the glue. And then administration and the superintendent kind of make sure that that glue is applied so that everything is cohesive.
Thank you.
Hello, Andrew Becker here.
Hello, Andrew.
Hello, as a school board member, how would you be an advocate for the districts, schools, and students?
Yeah, um, you know, I think often for schools, funding comes up. And obviously, I am happy to be a voice with our state legislature in, in increasing funding, meaning the funding. I think the last time I looked special ed was at 20% in their funding. So those areas, of course, need to be addressed. I think it's really exciting to think about opportunities for the students. I love the collaboration and how the community came together with pre-K at the wildlife sanctuary. That's a, it's, it's a great way to have the community be part of, be part of educating its stu, its students. So I think it's exciting to think about other opportunities of collaboration. Something that comes to mind is UWGB has that new STEM center. And providing maybe an additional high school opportunity to the high school kids. I don't know if it's 11th or 12th grade or maybe just working in partnership that way. Also, expanding dual enrollment and just looking for opportunities. I know collaboration is so important and their, Green Bay is wonderful for, for those opportunities.
Hi, Rachel, this is Brenda Warren.
Hi, Brenda.
Please identify specific examples of situations where you have demonstrated a working style, communication skills, leadership skills, or decision-making skills that you think would be effective on a seven-member school board?
Yeah, thanks for this question. I am really proud to be a founding member of Journey to Adult Success. We were recently in Give Big Green Bay. It's a nonprofit that provides housing mentorship advocacy for those who have a shot at foster care. And it started with just an idea that a few of us had in the community of the need that was there for these young adults. And we started from the ground up. We started with this big idea and met diligently every week, coming up with a bold plan. And we were patient and, you know, we, we divided it into small things that we could, to do to build. And we just kept going with it. And five years later, we are ready to expand to our second house. So I'm, I'm really proud of that. And if any of you have questions on that or if I left something out, I would be happy to, to answer that as well.
Thank you so much, Rachel. Anything else that you didn't get a chance to bring up in any of our questions that you wanted to make sure that you got out? And then any high-level questions that you might have for us?
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I would touch back on the pandemic. And I think that, you know, you guys did so much logistical work. And I'm wondering what, how you feel is like the, your next step in, in approaching the pandemic and where, you know, the next role that you feel like you have to play?
Yeah, I mean, it's tough to answer that question here because we have six board members, all with probably six different ways that they would answer that question. But I, I think that that's the work that's in front of us today, being day one, that our students came back. But that's what we have to continue to examine is, is what's the next step? Because we're certainly, this isn't over.
Right. Okay. I guess, other than that, I don't have any questions if, if others have questions for me.
No, I think that that's it. Well, we really appreciate you taking the time tonight. Appreciate you adjusting the schedule as we were a little bit ahead of schedule. So thank you for joining us. And we will jump into deliberation and hopefully have a decision by the end of the night.
Okay, thank you all. It was nice to see you.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to deliberation. Does anybody want a minute or just jump right into it? Ready to go? Okay, take a minute.
You're going to ask us for top three, is that right?
Yes, so I'll ask each person to identify their three top candidates. Beth will kind of take that information. One thing that I want to share as each of you are thinking through the process, and I know it came up a little bit earlier with our candidate Jessica Frankel Morales. So the possibility of a potential conflict of interest came up shortly after we selected her. I had a phone call with Jessica to talk to her about it. She agreed that she would go back to her employer and ask some questions. And then we took our contract with NWTC and sent it to WASB for their opinion. And you can see that Jessica tonight shared that NWTC didn't see it as a conflict. However, the legal opinion from WASB raised some red flags and an incompatibility issue with Jessica's position in working in one of our schools two days a week as a career coach. And specifically, some language in the contract that makes this a potential conflict of interest. First of all, it says, the Green Bay Public School District agrees to allocate $20,000 annually towards the salary of the career coach, which means that the district reimburses directly for, for a portion of her salary, although it doesn't go to her directly. Secondly, it also states in the contract that career coaches will work under the direction and expertise of an identified main point of contact for the school district and that the school district has the right to provide performance feedback to a career coach assigned to any Green Bay public school. If such a career coach fails to substanti- substantially perform in a reasonable manner, the duty is defined in, in the contract. Which means that not only would Jessica, in her role as a board, be the ultimate supervisor in the district overseeing the superintendent in all other positions throughout, but then also somebody in the school district would supervise Rachel, excuse me, Jessica, in her duties within the school district. So those two issues create a potential conflict. And so, you know, I, I told Jessica ahead of time that a couple of options would be to either see if there is a different position or to see if she could be placed at a different school. And obviously, the position from NWTC was that it wasn't a conflict and so that she wasn't looking to do that at this time. However, the legal opinion from the person that we reached to at WASB pointed out those two things specifically and said that it would be an incompatibility issue. So just wanted to put that out there. You can still list your, your top choices, but wanted to make you aware of that opinion. So we'll go in the order that we asked the questions. We'll ask each board member to give their top three. They don't have to be in an order, just the, the three candidates that you would, you found to be the, the top in your mind. Beth will take those all down and then let us know sort of what the results were, what the tally was. If there are multiple candidates towards the top, we can have a discussion from there. So with that said, Laura, I'd ask that you go first. Make sure your microphone is on when you speak so that people watching can hear us.
I don't know if I'm, honestly, I don't know if I'm ready to do that. I...
If, if you have it down to four, I guess there, there's no rules that we have to follow. If you had to give us a fourth candidate because you can't decide, I think that would be okay.
I am very, very torn about Jessica. I, I'll just be really honest. That's a real blow to, to know that this is, this could be problematic. And we had so many good candidates. I just want to say that. I'm just really grateful for people stepping up, so many of them. And then this last, you know, the people that we, we interviewed were just, you know, terrific, one after the other. It's just been really hard. I... Okay.
If you, if you need a minute, I can give you a minute.
I need a minute. Sorry, I need a minute.
I mean, I'll just echo Laura's words. It certainly takes a lot of courage to apply, to be on the Board of Education. It takes even more courage to, to be a part of the interviews tonight. And as we all know, it takes a lot of courage to sit at the board table. So yes, very fortunate that we had the number of community members reach out and apply. Very fortunate to have such a quality group of people to interview and speak to tonight. And although we can only pick one person, I would highly encourage everyone who interviewed to consider running for the Board of Education at some point because we know that we need our community to step up and support the work that we're trying to do here in our school district. So yes, very difficult decision that we're going to have to make. You know, we're, we're going to be splitting hairs between some really great people. And again, each board member has their own individual perspectives and priorities on what makes a good board member. And so that's why there could be some differing opinions here tonight. So how was that for a filibuster? I'm going to have to eventually put you on the spot.
Okay. Can I give four?
Sure.
Okay. Number one, and this is in no particular order. Eric Hagedorn, Josh Koch, Laura Leighton, Warren, and Rachel Cloud.
Dawn?
Can I ask if Jessica would be appointed? What are the potential repercussions of a conflict of interest? I mean, are we looking at being back here in a month? I, I guess, I'm, I don't know what that looks like.
Eric, do you want me to weigh in on that?
Yes, that would be great.
Under the incompatibility of office doctrine, if it's, the opinion from WASB is that the two offices are incompatible. And so when you take the, the incompatible office, then you automatically vacate your other office. So if she were to take the oath of office for the board position, she would have, she would automatically vacate her position with NWTC. That's, that's why it's so critical that everyone understand if she is appointed and she takes the oath, what that, those repercussions will be.
So who, who would make the binding ruling on that? Because WASB can't make a, a ruling, obviously, nor can we.
Yep, the, the Ethics Commission, the State Ethics Commission makes that final ruling. And, and we did indicate that she could have asked the State Ethics Commission for an opinion.
Ahead of time, we made her aware that they would be the board, that the State Ethics Commission would make that final decision. And if she wanted to reach out to them ahead of time, she could. There probably wasn't enough time, but the time I let her know about that too today probably wouldn't have gotten a ruling back in time, but...
Can I give two? Okay, Eric Hagedorn and Laura Leighton and Warren.
Thank you.
You heard that, Beth? We're good?
I did, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Rhonda.
I would also echo the thanks for the amount of people that have actually applied as well as we're willing to interview publicly, which is probably something most people never imagined they would be doing. And that is very difficult. So I greatly appreciate that willingness. My three would be Denise Seibert, Chad Dahl, and Laura Leighton Warren.
Thank you, Rhonda.
All right. I can't filibuster myself. I, I had a hard time with this as well. I, I will narrow it down to four. Eric, Josh, Laura, and Chad.
Thank you.
I will... I will go with Denise and Luke.
Thank you.
All right, I will go with Rachel, Josh, and Laura. And while she's tallying, I also want to echo, I, this was a really impressive slate of candidates. And it was really hard to decide between all of them. And I also would encourage anyone who interviewed today to think, think about running in the future because we always need good candidates.
Okay, Eric, would you like me to share my screen?
Yeah, that would be great. I took, I took notes too, but make sure that ours are the same.
Are you able to see my screen?
Yep, so that's what I had as well. So Laura Leighton and Warren had five. And then we had three candidates with three votes. Given these results, only one member received a majority of the support, which would have been four, and in fact, actually received five board members' selections. And then we had three people tied with three. So while there's certainly a case to be made for all of the people on that list, it appears to me that the recommended motion would be for Laura Leighton and Warren. And unless somebody has other comments or wants to say anything else, I would look for a motion.
Eric, I think it would be a good idea. I mean, clearly, we've all, we put her into into the the category for consideration. If we would be able to speak to, for transparency, maybe something we could all speak to the reasons why we did or a reason why we did, just so it's it's clear and it's out there.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, we, if you feel comfortable and want to share some of the strengths that you caused you to nominate Laura, feel free to do so. If you'd like to go first.
Yes, I will. I will definitely do that. Basically, I took I took notes when she was speaking. I also have some notes with regards to her letter of intent. A few things that she mentioned that I can appreciate. When we talked about the, with the question about the pandemic issues and how would you prioritize issues coming out of the pandemic? The fact that she noted social isolation and other issues that have obviously have been, I believe, exasperated, not necessarily resulting from the pandemic, but something that is, the the situation has exasperated from the pandemic. She spoke to the role of schools, and that's something that I personally have been speaking to quite a bit about. And I like that she noted and she recognized that the roles of schools beyond education has become evident. And that the the value of public education is, there's academics, obviously, right? But then there is also the social, social, emotional, community support that public schools so deliver so well. So that was important to me to hear her say that. I did like that she noted when it came to school board roles, she noted accountability as well as budget responsibility. Where are the resources going? I thought that was very important as well. And that she recognized that. And that the ability to see the big picture with regards to the the data that is collected and the voices behind the data and and the details behind that and really trying to be mindful of the voices that are included in that.
You took very good notes. I had a lot of those things written down. The only thing that I would add is that she has a first and a fourth grader in our district. So something else that I noted.
And one of the things I looked at, we, when we vote for school board, we vote at a city level. And I guess I look, I look at the members of the board and Eric, I think you live in the Preble quadrant. Rhonda, I think you moved. So you and Andrew and I all live within a mile of each other. And we're all in the West quadrant and Brenda and Laura are both in the East quadrant. And we don't have any representation from that Southwest quadrant. And many, all the things that Rhonda had talked about, I mean, her commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, I think she brings some things to the table that, you know, fill a bit of a gap for us. But our schools are all very different. And the fact we had quite a few people that fell within that Southwest quadrant. And I do think it's important that we have representation at the board table for all our schools. And, well, you know, our high schools, but our quadrants, right? They do look different. And that was something that played a part in my decision.
I have very similar things. I also liked her experience as a facilitator and also just, she's had a lot of experience with strategic planning. And so she talked about, you know, the importance of looking at the big picture and then drilling down to, you know, what are the pieces of that picture and and talking about analyzing data and making sure you're getting the data you need and all those kinds of things. So I just feel like she's had a really long lots of experience in her life with with a lot of the things that will be helpful on her board.
Brenda, may I ask, you're no relation to just?
No, no relation.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, so I didn't, I didn't have Laura on my list initially. I have no serious negatives or anything like that. I was, I was really hoping that we might be in a position to take someone who has firsthand not just advocacy, but firsthand experience with special needs students because of, you know, a parent of special needs students who we've often talked about wanting that perspective, at least I have. I've heard it before from people other than me as well. People who have actually had to navigate the the systems, which can be complex. That's why I had stressed other candidates more. That being said, I think, I think Laura would be a good you know, certainly would be a good advocate for various communities.
Go ahead, Laura.
I took a lot of the same notes. She has a lot of experience, just a lot of really stellar experience. And I feel like she could. We need someone who can transition quickly. And we don't really have the the luxury of a lot of time. And so that I feel like she could do that and make that move. I would echo Rhonda that what, something that resonated with me was her acknowledgement that our schools take on so many roles that haven't always been the case. And and this pandemic has exposed that in a way that that it, that that shows how urgent the need is in our community around food insecurity, mental health, a lot of things that aren't actually traditionally about education. And this is a topic that personally, for me, is something that I feel like we can never talk too much about. So I appreciate your mentioning that. I also liked, she talked about big picture, big picture thinking, but also systems and people and individuals, being able to do both. That, that also resonated with me. That's about it.
All right, thank you. With that, I would look for someone to make a motion.
I move that we appoint Laura Leighton Warren as our next, or as our school board member.
I'll second that.
Beth, do you want to take a roll call vote?
Yes, please. Smith.
Hi.
Brandon Hoover.
Hi.
Warren.
Hi.
Sit Nakow.
Hi.
Becker.
Hi.
McCoy.
Hi.
All right, motion carried six to zero. And I will be in touch with Laura soon. All right, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Hi.
Opposed? All right, and that adjourns our special board meeting. Thank you, everyone.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.